Hey, welcome into our Publica City Council. We're beginning this evening in a work session. It's five P M on eight over twenty seven twenty twenty five. So we'll be in the, I'm assuming that you're Mitch?
I'm Mitch.
Then we're gonna turn the time to you and you go ahead and pitch us the point of view you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. Um, have what I said that we can pull up on screen?
Oh, even.
I'm doing this.
Good.
Turn it off. Um.
Do you want the H M I?
Yes.
Gas didn't work for the last time we went there.
Thank you, man. Sorry to interrupt. Um, Mitch fans, I'm with Jay Fisher Companies. Thanks for letting us come and talk tonight. I was trying to meet with Chad Betliger. He got herniated, did his neck and he's on, while on his back, so he's a lead weight loss for surgery, so.
He didn't come. Oh my goodness.
Yeah, I know, right? Um, we have previously come and talked to the council about this property before.
For who to be, how, I don't, I don't some staff. Okay, so we'll.
Councilmember Windsor.
And the mayor, Rod Westborough.
Blair Halverson, councilman.
Councilmember Dills, do you remember me?
I do remember you.
The councilmember educated.
Okay, sure. Awesome. So council mayor here, staff, okay, great. Um, so this is the property just south of the car wash and you'll probably remember. Uh, I know that it's been in the city for a bunch of things over the years.
Is it hooked into one? Might be on two or. Didn't come up?
Good.
Right there.
Sit there.
Now you did, you don't point it now.
No, he put it in three.
That's a big chair. Are you ready to do your display setting so?
Connection guide.
Not good, are you?
I was right there now.
It doesn't take much to.
They picked the Samsung. They, did you pick the Samsung?
Thank you. I'm, hello, sorry. Um, okay, so moving with the, with the property assurance, I know a lot of people coming in the past. We came in. Gosh, it's been a long time. Uh, proposing for, uh, before that started, prior to that started. Proposing for a new zone, a new flex zones for the city. That was kind of the direction we've been giving up until that point. Um, got some feedback.
I mean, you were given up to that point.
That's what the previous buyer told us, but preferred ground. Uh, for the city. So we were, we were told to come and do that. Uh, it seemed like a good solution. Actually, the concerns I believe you brought up, councilmen, were, I thought, uh, pretty legitimate. You, I, I remember you saying. This is allowed under the current zone. Why don't we just administer everything there rather than create a new zone for specific use, which. You know, I worked, I worked in land use all over the state and I think it's a good point. And I tell a lot of places I create a new zone for one year. So. Um, we, we were trying to bring back to that point. Long story short, we decided to kind of focus on other projects. We're just running the Wonder Block Project in Ogden and we're just right with it. So we just kind of pulled back on a few projects. Ended up putting out this property for sale. Um, we've had several interested buyers come, uh, for the site and all of them have requested flex business uses here. Um, I know that it's, it's a commercial zone and the desire, I'm sure, for, from the city for true commercial restaurant use, retail. Things like that at this location. But just because of, it, it's a little pulled off from the act, from the main road, we haven't able to get a retailer for this serious coming here. However, with a more flex business use, we can get a lot of kind of retailers that are lower traffic. Uh, they don't need quite the, the, uh, the high traffic accounts that other retailers need. Um, at this location. So we wanted to come back. We didn't want one of our buyers to come in and entitle the property and log it down and promise all these things and then block away. From, and we'd be left with it, right? So as the landlord there, we wanted to come, we said pause on all them. We wanted to come back in, really get an idea of where the city's at. Uh, propose what we would, what we think is the best, highest, best use for the property. Um, and move forward with a development agreement. That works for both parties. And that way we could either develop it ourselves or go to buyers and say, this is what they're looking for. This is what's entitled. This is what you have to build if you want to buy the property and it should be a, a cleaner, uh, cleaner situation for everyone. So for today, what I, what we brought was this, this is the site plan we brought to you, um, in the past. That's showing a couple different of these flex business uses, uh, buildings. Um, right now it's zoned with two or three zones. Two zones for the main part of it. This little strip here is in a third zone. Uh, so regardless of what happens, we will have to come in for a rezone just to consolidate everything into the commercial highway zone, highway zone, requiring. Commercial highway zone. And with that rezone, we would propose some sort of development agreement that, that, uh, that describes more cleanly what, what, what type of use can go here. Cause to your point, underneath the virtual highway zone, we can develop this. But how do you want to develop? We don't want, we don't want to do something that isn't preferable to the council. The code kind of says that. If we were to develop something like this in the zone, it's allowed. And it would kind of be up to the planning commission to determine if the architecture is appropriate. If I'm not mistaken, rather than have that loose use language, we'd rather have a development agreement where you guys get what you want and we have exactly what we can get, right? So, uh, if you want to go to the next couple of slides. Uh, it's just an aerial of the project. We've worked with staff and we've worked with this property owner to the northwest. And we have, we've come up with an agreement to have them, he wants us to use that access and actually widen that access. Rather than put another one on twenty seven hundred each. And then we have one up here as well, which would provide access to the site. Again. It's not, it's not great access. It's good visibility. Site has great visibility. Not great access for true commercial, but with those two accesses, that's more than what we would need for flex business. Um, if you want to go to the next one, I think I showed these images in the past that some of you may remember. Uh, the, this is the type of use that we would, that we would propose as size and best use here. We've run a couple of different serals, but this is an embalco. Um, uh, it's, my kids go to preschool there. There's a furniture store. Uh, there's, uh, a little bakery thing that's there. They have a lot of different uses. There's an engine there. There's a gymnastics place there. Um, and it has these uses that are, that have front doors, that have front desks, that have a retail space in front. They can open the garage doors if it's useful, if it's summer, when they open them for, for my kids are there. Uh, or for different uses. It just allows it to be more flexible to get different types of uses. Uh, this is an actual product that we built in Woods Cross on the right. Uh, that is flex. We have, we have flex industrial there, which are kind of bigger warehouse. But we also have this building, which is, which is flex business and it's. You know, it's in how, we have an engineering business that works there. We have a contractor do offices out of there. Um, we own one of that, we own one of them just to, to, for some of our surplus, um, office supplies that we sell out of it. It's just, it's a flexible use and it's low traffic. So you don't have to have a lot of party.
So when you say flex, it's not living on the stairs.
No.
Okay, I'm just clarifying for everybody in the.
Yeah, that was my third question too.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
This is flex business.
It's flex business. It's not man caves. And if you go to the next slide, there's, I think.
It's not mixed use.
It's not mixed use. Exactly. It's flex, flex. It just makes more flexible. This is more kind of what we'd be looking at too. These ones. So this is the crossroad highway, right?
New Inter.
Thank you. Um, so they have a ton of this over there. That's, that's probably more of the flex industrial, more big, big warehousing spaces, right? They don't have the garage door on the front they have on the back. Whereas flex business, they, we designed the garage door on the front because of the aesthetics and the functionality of it. We don't have big giant trucks that need a loading bay. This is, you know, small deliveries or just the flexibility of the tenant to have kind of an outdoor space with it.
How do you manage that?
Manage what? Sorry?
Telling your tenants that they can't have big truck deliveries.
Well, first of all, we don't, we don't have a loading bay, right? Big truck, truck, duck, truck deliveries usually have the ramp that goes down so that you can.
They can, yeah.
Uh, this is smaller trucks, right? This is small box cars, uh, that are doing. So furniture and stuff can be delivered.
Car rolls a cart bed.
But there's not.
A H VAC.
Right, but there's not a, um, forkway that's doing all that work. So that, that's what we're proposing. Um, again, we think it's a good in-between use between a car wash. And any single-family residential that are right around it. It's not loud. It's not high traffic. But it's, it's commercial use. It's commercial tax dollars. Um, and it's, it's a good and needed use. We've, in talking with these people who have asked to come purchase this, they would. Of course, they say this is fire, but they, they say they can build it up right away. This is a, a needed use of planning all of it, like. Um, the only thing I'd say if we go to the last one that I had. We wouldn't be asking for much in terms of development agreement that deviates from the commercial zone, other than a few uses. Depending on how you guys define uses honestly. These are all, these are the use that we would, we, we foresee going into this type of building. Um, all of these are already approved in commercial zone, except for these two are not. Um, so as part of the development agreement, we would ask that, depending on what warehousing needs, that needs, you know, means every so often. But.
It's clarification. I keep hearing commercial zone and I hear commercial highway zones.
I'm using the way it been.
What is it currently? Or what is it doing for purposes?
Commercial highway.
So I.
Highway. My second question is, is all the uses in our commercial highway code conducive to being side by side? Pet shop versus a dry cleaner?
No.
So, so we have to be careful in the development if we go forward as to what uses could go in there. So that somebody doesn't come in and be adversely impacted to the one next.
Mm-hmm. And the homes right around that, and the buffer zone for them, and then the straight commercial, both the large one going across the street now. And the Maverick and the car wash without.
Well, 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 to be clear.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to.
No, no, I, I'm trying to understand too. Cause this is, this is the crux of the question is what uses can go in there, both from your perspective and what we want, right? But under a, a commercial highway zone. A pet shop could go next to something, right? You guys can't regulate what uses go in as long as they're permitted in that zone, right?
If that's permitted.
If it's.
If it's permitted. So one hundred percent.
We can't regulate that.
I know. So what I, what I would say on that, on that slide is we wouldn't be asking for different uses other than what's already permitted. Except for potentially warehousing and construction services that depend on those. I, looking through the useless.
So what would you be wanting in the development agreement or what would you support or allow within that?
So, great question. So the, the, the concern we have is if we came in with a site plan for these flex buildings, right? Flex business buildings. And the planning commission said this, this architecture isn't appropriate for the zone. Cause the, the code doesn't, doesn't say exactly how they have to be designed. It says the discretion is given to the city. So a development agreement would allow you guys to say, we want it to look a certain way. And we would say, okay, we'll design it a certain way. Just give us some assurance. That, that's where we're at. If, if the preferences we just, we come in under the zone and, and and try to use their proficiency, it's a lot of up in the air.
No, no, no. I, I was just gonna tell you the three zones and it was connected zone. That's all I was gonna say.
But we can, we can go back to the site plan and yeah, I've just, I wish one of the areas were out.
Go back to the site plan. I'll tell you where I am. And I, I think when we, uh, talked before. Uh, we said that on seventy hundred, where we got residential on the other side of the street. And we wanted, yes. No, we wanted to buffer that. So when we got down to the south end of your property, we either had a couple of patio homes in there or we had some, uh, duplexes that could be rented out, something like that to do the buffer rather than bring the commercial all the way to seventy hundred. Um, which is not what you got. I'm totally against bringing this right down to, to the residential street like that. And I'm totally against your access coming out on seventy hundred. There's no way we're gonna bring commercial out on the residential street like that. I'm totally against that. We shot, we had some other people come in down on four seventy five. They wanted to bring a road out on residential. We said absolutely not. And doing the same thing here. I don't like on that, on that street.
We have to have two accesses, right? So I, I don't, we don't mind where they are. But we're required to.
Yeah.
So if we can go on twenty seven, we would do that in a heartbeat.
So with that, let me go along that, um. These get traffic spending very close to your back to have around about.
Right.
There is a, and this, this development doesn't incur any of that. So is that not about just taking it all to the east? By someone else's property?
It's right there on that.
It would, we would have to give one.
So you would have to accommodate some of your property for right away for that round of that. That's, that's the way of that.
Okay. We should have the line words we brought. Yes.
Very.
And, and.
Well, that's the two things I don't like.
Mayor, to your point, if, if we can do residential here.
Should do that.
So the projected land use, so it's commercial highway all the way up.
Well, it's changing culture.
Well, that's the current zone. The projected land use on the general planning of it is commercial highway.
Yep, yeah.
All the way up to the.
All the way up to. With the cloud around it.
Yeah.
Or do you ever work with cloud before?
Do you need?
I do.
How do you manage?
I, I, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, what does that mean?
That means that they will consider any, the R P E zone, the residential.
Which is what was brought in before we were involved.
Think so. I mean, I.
No, I don't think so.
I.
Yeah, they do.
There was.
My reflection is that a full residential development was proposed here.
Yeah, that was Phil brought in.
Yeah.
And it was kind of what we were talking about with the mayor again, that we were, we were hoping that duplexes or patio homes kind of down in the commercial at the end. We were open to that and I think that's maybe what clouded this, but I mean, so right now. Proposed future is all commercial.
And, and again, we'd be happy to do that, but we've been told that's, that's a non-starter.
Well, the complex council's got. They're the making.
I, I mean, to be, to be honest with you, I, I'm not opposed to the commercial community. I like them. I know the buildings in Bountiful very well. I mean, they, they have some great tenants in there. Um, there hasn't been any issues. I often write them the road phone. And they've been, they've been a really good addition.
If, if, if done well, this is a really good use. That's what we've had with our projects too. They, they have been done poorly and they are more industrial and that's not, that's not suitable for a residential area. Um, and we, they wouldn't lease as well, right? So they, that, that's why these were created is kind of a almost not, not a buffer land use, but a less intense land use that, that can be designed well and fit within the context of the neighborhood.
And my, my thing would be is if it was, type of structure would be brick or block or hard surface, it wouldn't be in.
Rather than metal tin.
Metal type stucco or anything. That's, that's why I think we left that in there. So the planning commission could say this is what we want.
Which, which makes sense, yeah. Um, we would, we would be looking at tilt up or some kind of, yeah, block structure. Uh, but tilt up concrete is generally happens to be done lately, which depends on watching the costs of our life right now, but, um, yeah, that's what that ability is to, the tilt up structure.
We see more of those in the flex industrial than in the.
They do.
Flex business.
And that's because.
That's why I don't know. That's, you, when you talk about visibility, it's very, very visible.
So that one on the left is a tilt up?
Yeah.
This one, this one, I don't know. This one, this one on the right is tilt up. Um, and we, the reason they, they, you do tilt up is cause you can go pretty tall. We did tilt up here, cause like I said, we did flex industrial and flex business. And so you can, you can do them smaller too. Um, so when we looked at, at actually pricing this out, we looked at, we looked at masonry, we looked at wood and we looked at tilt up. And they, at that time all came in kind of the same. Um, it depends on, on the next several months, honestly.
Sorry, I hear tilt up like everyone, there's size, size requirements to get some faults right in front there. What do require their size to be designed to, to follow the international boundary goal or?
Yes. I mean, they have to, they have to.
Well, what's going across the street is gonna be a lot nicer than a tilt up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would think it would. Architecturally, if, if it was approved, I'm not, I'm just saying it would have to look something more like the other.
Like this one?
With, with some, with some contrast in there.
I think that would blend in better with the meeting, right with residential too.
I'm, I'm the last guy to talk about architectural features.
You were the first one.
Well, I know, but I, but I'm. Andy and Mayor always override me.
What do you think, Wayne? I saw it.
What, you want last word? Um, I just contemplate on mayor's comments and if there's a workaround for exiting out on the residential street and I, I don't know if there is in conjunction with the route about it's gonna be in there. How you figure that all in? So I'm kind of a quandary for that. I, otherwise I'm not really a publicist towards being proposed to there. And that was part of previous discussions about kind of going to, uh, that transition there. So I'm, I'm kind of sitting there listening. Nothing striking ears. Heck no.
Just checking.
Um, I'm, I'm still just open to the discussion. I'm listening.
It's gonna question this art and post we were most familiar with code. Do we, we don't allow for any auto repair, motorcycle repair or anything like that?
Well, we do to, uh, the, sorry, um, we have, uh, like engine repair for some builds, for rulers that retail sells.
Small motor. There's vehicle, yeah, it's.
There's a major vehicle, put them in repair and cleaner. Um, and so it's a retail, but they're all condition. Those, those three.
But it's also, but it's our conditionals.
Yeah, it could.
So, yeah.
It's whether you have one or don't have one.
We can just take them out.
You can just take them out, yeah. I mean, even the small contractors. Get questionable. If that's what goes in there. Most of what you have in some of the ones, the other ones don't end up being, because it's not, it has to be an industrial type place for those guys, but.
And, and that's the beauty of the development agreement is you can take those out, right? Um, and we are not planning on those. So we'd be fine with that, but that's, that's the negotiation part that, yeah.
I was reaching about, um, the Egress. So I'm with the mayor. That, that street that it would be coming out onto is kind of a nightmare as it is.
Small street too, right?
It's super narrow. Um. So my question is about roundabout. That could, could we have something on twenty seven hundred as a right turn only into a roundabout? Knowing that we're not developing the roundabout yet, but do you see what I'm saying? Can you pull the site plan? It's just really close to the roundabout. So I don't know how close we can have access to it.
Right. That would all have to be taken into consideration with that. The access on, on that road if stayed would really. We'd want to make sure that that was, we've got the spacing that we need the best we can. The reason that if we didn't want to put another one on the. The reason that if we didn't want to put another one on the twenty seven hundred, which they would prefer to record. Um is just that the more you put on the twenty seven hundred, the more access points you have. It just um over time will will impact the level of service of that room. So this road functions in for two purposes. One is just getting all the residents from the, you know, the South River Drive up to the neighborhood. The other is access for everyone to get in and out of the the commercial here. We want both to succeed. That was the whole reason we did the study on what, where accesses should go and and the whole, that's where the roundabout idea came in the plane. Um. I've, I feel like the study is a good thing to follow personally. Um. It, you you can ultimately make that that choice though.
What does the traffic study say again?
It's it's in our transportation.
That's a roundabout.
And it, it limits the access points on the west side to the two that are already there. And then it aligns on the east side with the um southern access point from the car wash. And then the other access point comes up just into the roundabout.
Okay.
And and that we could look at doing that, um. I mean, the the, that access for the, for the roundabout from the east side works just fine because it's the actual access to the property. This one on the west side is a little more complicated because it's also the road. So to add another access point close, close to it is, can be challenging. Um but we would want to to make sure that we spend enough time doing that so that we don't regret however we do.
If you brought that access out on seventy eight hundred, is it to putting where they're showing it, I would think we want to move it up towards twenty seven hundred as much as we can. I don't know what.
Well, ideally.
Would allow, but it would.
Ideally, if that home were to get incorporated into this. Uh, this one?
Is that the plan? Is that what you're trying to?
I know this. This one?
Yes.
I, but.
Our, we could bring the access just to the intersection. It would be perfect.
You know, I was, I looked at it and I, our home builder sister owns it. And um like should be issued, so we can see instead of no chance. And so it's like, well, uh.
Yeah.
Kind of a weird wraparound guess.
Yeah.
I know. I'm just saying that would be, that would be ideal, because if you just bring it to that intersection, um. They want to just leave it here.
Yeah, I would have tried that one never.
Maybe you do trucks and access alleywood or something and then once they set up, you can, you can look into proof.
Exactly.
Just kidding.
So help me understand something about the project itself, man. Um first of all, you were saying that um you're not wanting this one to be industrial. Which is good because we don't have any industrial around it, no light industrial, nothing that would even come close to it.
Right.
Matter of fact, I'm sure you know what's going across the street from it.
Yeah.
That doesn't really comply with anything industrial. That would not even be one of our buffers.
It's a medical office, right?
Yeah, yeah. Um and then, of course, the car wash, you know, we can do some things there. What? Everything you're kind of showing so far is still just warehousing. So you mentioned before that the other one had done a little bit more retail flex. Um since you're builder designer, what do you see as the difference between retail flex versus warehouse flex?
Um primarily to answer your question bluntly, primarily height, first of all, because warehouse flex, they have a certain height to get the third, three stacks in there, right? Whereas retail flex is is much lower ceiling height and it limits the types of uses that can go in there um comfortably. So uh it create, it's really on the outside perspective and the interior layout, it's not hugely different. Besides, like retail flex or health flex business, but yes, retail flex has, usually has some sort of front office that's a TI when you enter. And it's be more people rather than for forklifts or storage or things like that. And the lower heights allow for for different uses that need more space, that don't want a ten foot ceiling, that want higher ceilings or more light or whatever it is. Uh like, like, like ninjas, right? Um but don't, aren't stacking for three shelves high of pallet. Um so that, that's, that really is the primary, primary difference, height and lack of loading bays limits the type of warehousing that happens here to much more.
Do you, do you think the uh large garage instead of a front door or next to a front doors? Um you don't think that changes retail versus industrial, again, going back to the forklifts and stacking two or three high?
It for sure changes. It for sure changes the type of retail. Um really?
What kind of retail that you got that still uses a lot of your forks?
Well, I'm saying that we don't get retail that has.
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying in your other business that you guys had retail ones in there also.
We have both, yes. And now we have, we have some that have loading bays that are true warehouses that are off the road and then on the road, you have these more, more commercial retail.
Like the bakery one you were saying? Or is that not in yours?
That's not in mine. That's in mountain. But yeah, and and it's like a little shop where they use the back where they make things. But in the front, you can come in and buy them, right? Um there are some of these that that is like a, I often bring up furniture store. They sell like a small amount of furniture and then behind it, behind this retail facade, they store it, right? So they they use that, that garage door when they need to and then the rest of the time it's, it's a retail frontage and it's not a, not a uh, you know, an Ikea that's generating giant loads of traffic. It's just more of a boutique style furniture store, so.
So each one of these is going to be um for lack of a better word, it's just gonna be a clean slate. Uh they'll buy, I'm assuming they're buying the building.
Uh they'll be leasing. At this point, we could subdivide them, uh but we haven't discussed that at this point.
They're gonna be in. They will. Okay. I didn't know. We've anyways.
We did, we did subdivide it down there. You've leased them before. It's a good question.
Now, our family actually owns a couple down in Draper and those are sold separately.
Individually.
Uh um and they have it, it's kind of a funky way to do it, but uh they have the building and then they have on the opposite side, another tenant that has the second story. Um so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it. It 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 works, I guess. Um. So this is the original plan, I guess, that everyone's gonna be looking at that is going to be a small pedestrian door, a large garage door, um and then giant hollow space. And if they want to, they can do a front office type of retail if they want.
How, yeah, great question. How it works is, yeah, we developed what's called core and shell, right? We build the core. We put in all the utilities, we put in bathrooms and how we get on another project, now that you're asking, I'm remembering five years ago, we subdivided every bay, right? So we parcel out every bay and we're leasing it. But in the future, we can sell it. Or if there are users that come and say we want to buy it, we can do that and keep some of them. We probably do something similar here. I I'm I'm not positive. But yeah, so it's core and shell and then depending on the user that comes in, it has to be kept flexible. That's, that's honestly the struggle here is I don't, can't tell you exactly which users are coming in. But depending on the user, they do tenant improvements to make their space how they want it. How they need it for their business. They have that flexibility where they can essentially design their space in a very inexpensive way that's flexible, but if they leave, we take out the tenant improvements, put a new one.
Well, the, and I I I would hope that if you've got plans for us to anyway negotiate in good faith and whatnot and uh get to a contract. Um we can be open and honest. How many of these have you done before? You only have the one that you showed up on there or is there a couple that you've done?
We've, we've done two of these projects. If we were to afford it to the development agreement, we would, we would do it with our buyer, right? So, because they're the ones that are gonna wind by it. Um who does these exclusively. The couple we've talked to, they're not big guys. There's one that lives in South River and he knows all of you for what he says, but uh he has three projects like this. And he wants another one. So we've designed in conjunction with people who've operated in addition to to our experience.
Yeah. Um and and Blair did link one forward on the charger. Um. So with those two and this company you've worked with, um what retail, out of all the units? Are we talking ten percent became retail, the rest has just become construction type? Um I mean, if if we're being open and honest, I just want to understand really what we're getting ourselves into and.
I don't know what to answer that.
Well, the ones that they have right now again.
Well, if we're uncomfortable with them, they, say you're uncomfortable construction. We exclude. I mean, if we're decided we're uncomfortable with them, and we make a list of things we're uncomfortable with, they can decide whether that fits into their deal. If if that's, I mean, if that is our worry. And then part of it is mine.
Part of my worry is not knowing when I don't know. And that's why I was hoping you'd be able to give us a little bit of information about.
Hon- honestly, I would if I knew that I, it's a stupid cop out answer, but I'm a pre-gate guy. I don't do good property management. So I could maybe find that out. I don't know.
You know, it would be interesting because um right there, that's, uh I think you say, that's one of our, our, our few choice pieces of commercial property left.
Is totally definitely.
And to use the term to fill it up with big boy toy sheds, um I just don't see that as a use. I mean, all that is is a large storage shed and yeah, if they want to put stuff in it, they can. Or if they want to run a business in it, they can. But there's nothing that is convincing me yet that that's what's going to happen.
It would just be a man cave.
Um big boats, big RVs, you guys rent them however you want, but if it, if it doesn't even have a chance for the city to be able to say, look at the improvement that's happened to this land, um it's storage sheds, don't do that. Um that's, that's one of the concerns I had for one of our, 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 our best last pieces of commercial going right across from a place that's going to have people flooding it all during the daytime hours. So it does have a good chance for retail things.
It does. That's why I think we need to consider that. Or regen, the collision term.
Yeah.
That might even come in, it's gonna change that whole dynamics up there.
Yep.
Really is.
And I, I, I don't know the full picture of what's gonna, I, yeah, I've heard that it's some, uh, long, uh, government office. And we're not, we're honestly not, we're not trying to get away with anything here.
Oh, and and that's what I was suggesting.
No, I, I know. I'm just, just to reiterate kind of rapid, I, we're not trying to get away with anything. We're just trying to get some kind of certainty of what could work. To us, this is a good use, highest and best use. And the development agreement around, you really can, yeah, take out the uses we don't want. We'll try to get the uses we do want. And and make everyone feel comfortable. Cause I, I get it. I, I don't like a man cave situation. I, if that falls under storage, I just don't understand the use's definitions well enough. So if it's, if that's storage, let's get it out of there, of the development agreement. And just put things that you would be comfortable with that we think we can get and make this a developed, clean piece. Rather than um, rather than a leftover commercial piece that should be developed, I think.
We jump.
That looks like contact.
Go ahead, Mike. I'll jump in right quick. Given the discussion and not know what's in, what could go in, my issue is it all gets built as one phase. Not one building and then empty space until you get more people and then you build.
You prefer it one phase.
I would build, you got three buildings, four buildings there. Me, it's one phase. I don't know how the other council feels, but to me, it's, it's, it's not four phases. It's one and done.
That would be our intent. Um I can't promise the buyer, but we can put that in the building, right? That, that it's something that goes at once. For us, that's, that's just logical for cost.
I just, it's, the construction is gonna disrupt the public. I'd like to, to get it over with. On the other hand, I understand I don't want big buildings there either.
Right.
So I, I just put that out there. So what's the, what's the likelihood they can be filled upon completion?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
I still think on that south end, we need to try and get a couple of residential lots there to face those other homes that are right there. I think if we don't, we're gonna have a firestorm down here at City Council.
Yeah.
So you're saying right down here on the corner, if we put houses, limiting where the parking lot is, so you've got like two, three residential, whether it's.
Just a couple right in.
Uh huh. Where would the road then be acceptable to go out?
Well.
I like Danny's idea of right turn only. That was great.
That's a brilliant idea.
Well, right there, right there, it's showing a hundred, probably not a band, which is probably where it's placed.
So.
So I was where the, where the one uh patio is, that makes to the home. I mean, you could put one right there. And then come up, put it, put two together right there and then have the access light up this way a little bit more.
And then I'm gonna finish it off for a second.
You're right.
But so, Mayor, you're talking such two right here, right?
Two, right. But one where the, yeah, where the single one, where the smaller one is, right next to the little red house.
Okay.
And then, you know, two right there together and then have your access come in.
So for the roundabout though, we know we have to come in here a little bit and probably over here on the other side, there's where the left stop is. Can you estimate how much that would take? I mean, are we talking like?
We have.
If you look at the property search on the other property that was added to us, it's pretty big. And it's, it's a pretty, if you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah, so if you look up, if you look on the, if you click on the medical side, you can see that your jaw right there.
It's not just the. Yeah.
Okay, so it's in a roundabout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Pretty close. But just not knowing what is, was potentially going on that corner, right? This is showing the general roundabout and there could be, because if you recall, we've got two lanes coming into it, we, I mean, four lanes coming into it. But uh only two lanes leaving it on the south side.
Correct.
So there's ways that you could maybe adjust that to accommodate it a little bit better, but that, that would just be where we would, once we got to design, we would want to make sure that, that I mean, it has to be designed with this.
Right, with this in mind?
Yes.
Yes, so that's.
Yes.
I just don't know where else you can have this. Cause even right here is too close.
Well, the, the, the closer you get, like if you could put it right next to the house, that would probably be good for um getting it away from the roundabout. It's not great for anybody who's trying to get to twenty six because it's just an offset intersection.
Is that road, um will that road be widened? Yeah, that's.
Yes.
What about right here through their property? They?
Yes, they, all of the prop, all of the prominent fronts in seventy eight hundred that they own, they will be, we will, we will improve our, yes.
So it won't be widened in front of the little house, it'll be widened.
Well, we would, we would design it such for, uh to accommodate that. Um what we had talked about sometime um long ago was that that would be the city's responsibility and it makes sense to do it at that time rather than leave this little open piece.
Cause that, that's a heavily used road.
But there are.
It is.
Yes. Yeah, I know. I, I have, I have concerns about how that's all gonna work.
Correct.
And also have concerns we put an access out on to twenty seven hundred. I don't think there's an easy answer to that.
Well, but I thought in the original, you had some center stripping going all the way down so that the only thing you could do was turn right um both out of the car wash and whatever was going to go in.
If it got, if it got to that point where we need to limit left entrance, then the roundabout allows for that to easily.
And that's why I thought, why we made it so grandiose was because we were imagining, you know, trucks, you know, being able to turn around in their, uh, suburbs.
We're trying, yes, trying to accommodate, since there are trucks that are in this area, if they got turned down this road. That they would have the ability to turn around around.
If they came out of the car wash or the gas station where I did or both of them.
And not go all the way up.
Right.
And not have to start going back through the.
Yeah, right there. And that's why it had to be so wide.
Yes, and I, yes. But you would, as you come up with the four lanes, those two lanes coming from the north peel off. And then you only have the two lanes exiting continually down place in that. But how that comes into seventy eight hundred south, um you know, the details of how that will work has to play well with what they're proposing to do. We're not quite to that level yet. I mean, yeah, once we get to there, then we'll, we'll leave that, that deep in the back.
Okay, we need to move along the council here in fifteen minutes.
I'm just a.
Uh enough direction or do you want a little more direction?
Well, no, I think, I think I have some direction. I guess, would you guys, would you be open to next steps of us drafting language? Drafting language, right, to review? So what would next steps be?
Um, going more upon the actual product that's going into it. Um, I wanna see the difference on how this is going to not be an industrial. Commercial flex and how we'll be a retail commercial. Because I'm, I'm glad, uh, we've, we've already got in here all conditional uses and permitted uses allow for office spaces. It allows for all of these other kind of things. Um, but none of it does have any for, um. Industrial use, no forklift type, right? So I'm still waiting to see that that model is going to come in, um, and. There's plenty all around that, I mean, I can even send you our building down down in Draper. It just shows it's easy to do. Um, it just depends on what you wanna put there and so far I just haven't heard anything that doesn't say this is gonna be more industrial, just smaller. So, uh, help me understand that. And I, I think would be a great project. I think we could work well on it. But that's my opinion.
Is that not something we could do? Simply in the development agreement?
You can once we know what it is. I don't want to have them invest so much time and money on expensive. Legal fees to try to get to a agreement that isn't going to ever fly just because they wrote it all in. I'd rather have an idea.
Let me ask you, is development agreement more expensive or going to the market?
As an architect, so.
Draw.
Our house legal is not the extent, it's becoming an architect and engineer to.
Is a, is a big.
We don't have to go to the marketing expense and it's also tax deductible, so it's not. It's. All you have to do is put it in, um, AutoCAD and I know you've got a person in your office that does AutoCAD. Because all of us did, even the home builders that I worked with did. It, it's just, all I'm saying is let's just get something simple. That says this is how it's going to be different. Because right now, if not, all it is to me is just industrial. And I'm just being blunt, I'm not trying to.
I, 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 I don't know what, 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 like, produce that. Show what you're asking for, but if that's, if that's the path, that's, that's what I'm here, you know. So if, if, if we, if we go design this building, we would submit to the city and then and give the feedback. As the code is. Um, the, the idea of the, of development, uh, development agreement is just an idea, is to try to get on the same page before that starts, but. That's not, I believe that's, that's why we came to this series.
Well, I am absolutely not opposed to a development agreement because I feel like that will protect the city's interests. So I'm.
Yeah, definitely with a.
I definitely wanna do that with permitted uses and we can talk about how we put.
We can do that first. You can do that first and present that to us.
See where we are.
See where we're at and then you figure out the next.
Okay.
Say about something, no.
But does code preclude them from the design that you showed us, right? And I, and I don't like, I mean, I, I, I get, I, I get what you're saying on an overhead door, but. All of those permitted uses, a bakery needs forklift and a little flower. Little HVAC guy, I got five forklifts. In my, in my shop, I'm a little HVAC guy.
And that's the sky on fire yourself.
I mean, but a, a little guy's gonna have a little forklift. That's what I'm saying. Those permitted uses, I'm just going. Does our code preclude that? If not, if it's gonna be a contentious issue. Just go design that code and be done and bring that to us. That'd be my suggestion. I mean, if that is permitted use and we can't tell you no to that. I mean, I'm happy with the building. I think they're wonderful. I really do. And I think that's the next step. I, I truly do.
I agree with the use, but. We're gonna get stuck on the visuals. It's not going to be industrial because we do have different languages between both. And, yep, and we can, we can go as far as we want to down a little bit. Um, but it's more than just the.
Well, it is, but I think we could start there and then you could go to the other.
And I take.
But like we said, we like the left side.
That can bound.
Totally right.
Yeah.
Consideration just for the Egress, if we do falls right there, and I'm not sold on that.
Ew.
I, I kind of would prefer the commercial, but I, I'm open to see what a couple would be, but I think that might make the Egress even harder to go, to deal with. Cause you have driveways to, uh, consider.
Well, thank you. This has been helpful. We'll, we'll put something together and, and bring it, you know, keep the discussion going if that's. But if you, if you're, if you're, if you're staff, you gotta.
Anybody want to dismiss us?
Everybody want them?
Dismiss us?
Mr. Mayor, wait, everybody needs to.
Uh, yes. Let's, uh, dismiss and.